I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, in the name of the Constitution, of liberty, justice for all.
Okay, Christine's here, Art's here. Tony?
Yes?
And Phyllis?
Yes?
Larry? Okay, so Larry's not here. There is a quorum. Today's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town's website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed.
Hi, Borther.
We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the doors of Town Hall as the town's bulletin board. As the town's bulletin board...
Hello?
As the town's bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the public. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. Do you want to say something about honey?
Yes, I do. So, for folks who are joining us on Zoom, if you could, please mute yourself for the moment until your application is up on the agenda. I have the ability to mute folks from here, and I'll do so if necessary, but it would just be easier if people could manage that part themselves. If you're on a phone, you can mute and unmute using star six. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, the meeting will proceed as follows. There's an agenda. Each application will be taken in the order of the agenda. We'll take public comments from the applicant and from any member of the public. When the record's closed, there'll be a deliberation period at the end of the meeting where we deliberate on each of the applications, and at that point, there's no further public comment, but you can either wait until the end of the meeting to find out how we vote on your application, or you can find out from zoning in the morning. Okay. Any comments for anybody? Did I forget anything? Okay. So, I would...items one through three, there's a request from the applicants, from each of the applicants, for an adjournment to the October meeting. I would move that we adjourn items one through three to the October 19th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. Okay, so the next up, under new business, is Anthony and Jamie Cipriani. Are they available?
I'm here via Zoom.
All right, great, thank you.
Oh, I did...I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, each of the applicants and any of the people giving public comment are sworn in as we take sworn testimony before our board.
Okay. Ms. Cipriani, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Why don't you describe your application?
The application that I submitted is to legalize a deck on the backside of my home. It is over by five feet according to zoning standards on each side, and I had the building inspector over. It seems to be safe, sound, and to code, and now I just have to attend this meeting, obviously, and make sure it's okay with zoning.
Okay. Do you know how long the building has been there, or how the deck, how long the deck has been there?
I do not. I've been there for five years. The deck was there prior to our purchase. When we bought the house, our lender didn't have an issue lending the money with a deck that wasn't legalized, and we signed a waiver or whatever the piece of paper was saying that we knew that it needed to be legalized, so that's what we're doing now.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
All right. Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
All right. Are there any members, or is there any member of the public which is to comment on this application?
Yeah. This is Jenna Filer.
All right.
Ms. Filer, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
I just want to say that I am Jamie's neighbor on her north side, and I have no problem with her deck.
Okay.
This is Jenna Chuffington-John, and I swear that same stuff, and I agree, I do not have any problem with it.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
You can...if you're muted, you can hit star six on your phone, or star nine to raise your hand, or you can do it on your screen if you're on Zoom. Don't see anyone?
Okay. Then, unless there's any objection, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that's carried. Next on the agenda is Forty Honey Lane, Moroslav Gola.
Hello, yes, this is Veronica Golova. I'm representing the office.
Hi, Ms. Golova, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I swear.
Why don't you describe this application?
We are requesting a five-foot variance for landing and stairs through green porch at Forty Honey Lane. The homeowner was not aware that the landing and stairs would be in breach of the 20-foot from the property order. We would really appreciate if you would consider our request.
Okay, and this is an existing screen to porch, right?
Correct. It was built around four years ago.
I'm sorry?
It was built around four years ago.
Four years ago?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from any of the board? Christine?
No questions.
All right. No questions.
Larry? I'm sorry, Tony? Tony appears to be frozen again. Phyllis?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. Is there any member from the public?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right. I don't hear anyone who wants to comment on this. Without objection, does anyone have any objection to closing the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Well, then I'll move that, and you'll second. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay. Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Number six is Alyssa Jansen at Six Phyllis Road.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Ms. Jansen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and why don't you describe this application?
Sure. So, I live at Six Phyllis Road. I'm looking to build a small front deck in the front of my house. I do need a variance of eight feet. At least 50% of my development all has front porches, so I'd like my house to at least blend in a little bit. I am required...it looks like I'm looking for a variance of eight feet.
Okay, and you submitted a diagram with a survey?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and just to be clear, it looks like the deck goes along the front of your home.
Right from the...
It's seven feet.
Right from the front. Correct, yep.
Seven feet wide. There's a part that says nine feet. That just includes the steps?
That's where the steps are.
Okay, and when we went there on the site visit, you have a walkway and then a wooden border on each side of the walkway?
Correct, so that the deck itself will not interfere with my walkway.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
What?
Tony, we can't hear you. You're muted.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. And Phyllis?
No questions.
All right. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Again, you can use star six to mute, or unmute yourself, I should say, on the phone, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, otherwise just on the screen. And I am not seeing anyone.
All right, in that case, I'll move to close the public hearing.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, then that's closed. Passed. The next is special use permit application. Anthony and Laura Piccone, or Picconi, are you there?
Yes, good evening.
And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay, it's Piccone, thank you.
Mr. Piccone, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, what would you like to do?
We're looking to get a small kitchen or kitchenette installed into an existing accessory apartment in our basement.
Okay, so I think we have a couple of questions for you. You occupy the home?
Yes.
Okay, and you tend to remain occupying the home?
Absolutely.
Okay. And let's see, how many bedrooms are there?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
How many bedrooms will be in the accessory apartment?
In the apartment itself, one.
And what's...how do you enter into the apartment?
The basement has a full walkout through the back entrance.
Okay, and how about parking?
The parking situation on the property is about five or six spots in a driveway and a one-car garage.
All right. Any questions from the board? Christine?
That covers it, no questions.
All right.
No good, thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
All right. Is there any member from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, or just the bottom of your screen, on Zoom.
Okay, I don't hear anyone, so in that case, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Number eight, Ryan Franklin, 49 Pleasant Lane. Is Ryan Franklin there?
I'm here.
Mr. Franklin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I do.
Would you describe your application?
Well, we're looking to erect a six-foot fence along the back portion of our home to separate our backyard from Pleasant Lane, which is...can be pretty busy. So, a six-foot fence with a six-foot setback from the road, and then a return to the back corner of the home.
Okay, and the way that your house is oriented, is this...the application is for variance from a front yard code. Can you describe how your home is oriented?
The home is oriented that the road sort of curves around, so the Pleasant Lane runs along the side of our backyard, so that's the frontage, and then it curves, and then continues around the front of the house as frontage. So, all of our usable, occupiable play space is frontage, so we're just looking to delineate the backyard, so we have some privacy at home.
All right, and based upon the diagram that you provided in our site visits, is it fair to say that no part of this fence will interfere with any site along the roadway for intersections or...
No, it won't.
Ingress or egress from the road?
No, it won't. When you're on the road, you can see...you can see all the way past, and the whole front of the house is...front of house, frontage is clear.
All right, and you provided an illustration of the type of fencing that you intend to put up, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what you intend to do?
Yeah, horizontal kind of architectural-style fence.
Okay, are there spaces between the slats?
Yeah, there are. The drawing is a little...the scale is hard to read, but half-inch gaps between the slats. And this fence was...we kind of helped...Adam's fencing come out, and they kind of helped us fine-tune the design. They said it's a pretty common application, and they've seen this kind of application from the town before.
Okay, and will it be painted, or stained, or natural?
So far, the plan is to have it be kind of natural.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay, Phyllis?
Well, this is Phyllis, no questions.
Okay. Is there any member from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Phyllis. Any member from the public who wishes to comment on the application? All right, I don't hear anyone, so in that case, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to...then that passes. Move on to number nine, Charles Vedder, 26 Thomas Avenue. Is Mr. Vedder available?
If you're there and you're muted, please unmute yourself, or if you're on the phone, it would be star six to unmute.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Number 10 is Hector Lopez, 111 South Gate Drive. Is Mr. Lopez available?
Yeah, that's me right here.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
Yeah, I'm looking for a variance for my structure, you know, is it shaded area for the...for my grill? My grill has been there...I had my grill there for the last 20 years. It's a different grill, but, you know, the area there, and I'm looking for a variance to permit me to have it where it's at. It's supposed to be 10 feet from the line. Currently, it's seven feet, five inches, and I'm looking for a variance of two feet, seven inches.
Okay, and the grill, can you describe the grill? Is that a permanent structure?
The grill is not a permanent structure. The grill could be moved in and around.
Okay, but the shed, the existing coverage?
Right. It's permanent, yes.
All right, what would happen if you moved the grill and the shed over two feet?
It would cost a lot of money, because it's well-built and it's deep into the ground.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
So, this is extended down through the patio?
Yes.
And you can't pull those legs up, right? That's what you're saying?
Right, excuse me?
You can't move it? It's cemented in, or is it just...
It's cemented in. It's not that big, it's six by eight. It's just good enough for the grill area. It doesn't...right now, where it's at is the perfect place, because it will not get in the way of other parts of the property.
How high is the shed or the covering?
It is eight...it's close to nine feet.
Lisa, I seem to recall there's a limit on shed heights for the 10-foot variance, sideyard variance. Is that accurate?
21048 says that you can have sheds of six feet from the property line, but I believe they have to be less than eight feet, and I see Chrissy looking it up right now. She's nodding. I can check while you continue with the...
Okay.
But this is not really a shed, this is more of a gazebo, or just covered. Is there a difference? Are the regulations the same?
Well, 21048 says accessory structures have to be 10 feet from the sideline, and then there is an exception from that for sheds, or a small shed. So, if this is not a shed, then it would not be amenable to the exception in any event, but I also think it's not amenable because it is only allowed to be six feet tall, I mean, eight feet tall.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not a shed, this has no windows, has no doors, it's just out in the open like that.
So, actually, if it was a foot shorter, it could be closer to the lot line, right?
Yeah, it would cost a lot of money, but I did put it in my application, the height of it.
So, you did?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, sir?
No, we'll see what the public hearing...
I'm sorry?
Let's see what the public has to say.
Well, let's see what Tony has to say.
No, I'll say one. Yeah.
Okay, after our folks. All right. Tony, you have any questions?
I have no questions at this point.
Okay, Phyllis?
I apologize if you mentioned this before. How long has the shed been in place?
Since June.
Okay, so it's new?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, that was it.
Okay. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on this application? Sure, come on up.
Yep, let me see right there, and the microphone will turn on for you.
Hi, Jack Altman, I live next door to Hector.
Mr. Altman, do you swear or affirm?
Yes.
Complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Additionally, did you...you or someone from your family submit some emails and photographs?
Yeah, I was trying...
Okay, so we'll add those into the record.
Is it because I'm too close? No, the issue we have is just with the privacy, so if something was done to remedy the privacy issue, we'd be okay with it, but the way it is right now, it's too close, and everything is like looking right into our windows, and it's just too much to put up with the way it is. So, you know, I have the pictures if you...
That will be a part of the record, you submit those photographs.
So, I mean, you understand, like if...it would...all it would take would be to put like even a couple, some kind of border between, so we don't have to see all of that, right? So, even if it was just a couple sections of fence or something on that side of the stone wall that was all built up, then it would be acceptable as far as blocking, you know, helping our privacy, and also not letting all the smoke from the grill come into our window.
Any questions, Christine?
No questions.
All right.
If it was a fence, how high do you think that fence would have to be? Because that's a raised deck you put on there, right, that stone?
Yeah, if it was on the other side of the fence, probably about six foot, you know, you're looking at...because like if you look at the picture of the structure, it would have to be kind of like as high, you know, to be able to block all of this. It's...
We don't have the problem.
Yeah.
What was your...
I know, I was just thinking, if the structure wasn't there, there's still, you know, there's still that kind of exposure, so I don't know.
May I say something?
Makes a difference having that.
But the grill could be moved somewhere else. There's getting a lot of smoke and stuff in the grill.
That's all.
Yeah, it's just a privacy...
Is the grill in question, or is the structure in question?
The application is for the structure.
It's the structure, not the grill? Okay.
Do you have any more questions?
No, that's...
Okay, Phyllis?
Can you tell me the name...no, the name, the street number of your house, or you live below, right?
Yeah.
Going...
113.
What's your house number?
113.
Okay, okay, so you...because of the topography, you are below 111.
Yes, so it's, you know, even worse than what you might imagine, just having somebody, you know, because it's raised up, then of course, all the smoke just comes right into the window, you know?
Oh, no, I understand, and there's not much...it would impact your privacy, yes. I have no further questions.
All right. Anything else you'd like to say, or is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment?
May I say something?
Yeah, the camera's asking, but you want to wait and have him wait?
Yeah, finish what you have to say.
Yes, the grill has been there for 20 years without the cover, so the smoke has never been an issue, and it still isn't, and the fact that the structure is there... And, um, the, the fact that the structure is there, as far as his privacy is concerned, it's further out. The grill is, the shed is further out. The, the, and he, you know, with the shed there or not, the grill is still there. And his privacy has never been, I, I find it hard to believe that if I'm going to grill chicken or something, that I'm interfering with his privacy where, where as far as the grill is facing the back end of the yard facing down, and it's not a place to hang out. It's a place to cook and leave.
I got it? So there's not going to be any back and forth? Let, let the applicant finish. And if you want to make some additional comments, this is not a forum to have a back and forth between the two of you. So go ahead.
So basically, that's it.
Okay. Is there anything you want to comment about that?
It is a place to hang out. There's windows on the side where it's made up like a bar and people sit at the little windows while he's doing the grill. I mean, it's not, it's not just a, like, he could have just put up an umbrella. And the grill has never been as close as what it is to us right now. Anybody that's ever looked at it is, is.
Or not. I think the history of the eight months that preceded that is very clear that the government reacted late largely because.
You got it on? You got it on?
I am frank.
Okay, was there anything more you wanted to say? Or do you want to let the other individual? Okay. You guys can swap.
You have to, yeah, because the other gentleman needs to come up.
83 Camelot, next to Jack.
Arm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. It's just that I'm opposed to it. When they're out there, it is a privacy issue when they're on the patio and under the shed. And to me, it's a noise issue also.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Was there someone else on Zoom that wanted to comment on this application?
Again, you can use star six to unmute if you're on the phone, star nine to raise your hand, or if you're on Zoom, the controls are at the bottom of the screen. Not seeing anybody.
It was the Santa Drive or however, S N, S A N T A D R that was attempting to speak a while ago.
Right, and lower greatness to Tony then?
Oh, okay. Well, I can unmute that one and we can see. Well, they seem to be muted. Not get, not able to unmute them.
So for the person identified as Santa Drive, if you can unmute yourself if you
So they're still muted, I'm guessing. Either they don't want to comment or they're unable to unmute. To answer your question from before, the, it is sheds not greater than 100 square feet in floor area and less than eight feet in height may be placed within six feet of any side or rear property line. But that's sheds.
So it's still a 10-foot requirement, right?
Right.
Okay. Again, for the person identified as Santa Drive, who attempted to make some comments on this application, if you still want to comment, please unmute yourself. Or raise your hand. Or jump up and down.
Yeah, I don't know why, but when I'm hitting unmute, it's not unmuting, so they must.
Actually, um, Mike, when you said that you were unmuting me before, I got a message that said the host would like you to unmute.
Oh, was that right?
And you'd had, I had to click yes or no.
Okay. Well, I, I hit it several times, so we've definitely asked.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this application? Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
What's his name?
Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Lopez, you, you built this, you built this without getting a permit, correct?
Yes, um, what happened was due to the COVID, I was trying to find out if I could build it. And I went online, but I didn't find anything that would resemble it as a shed, you know, like a, like a shade area for, for a shed. So then, um, it was built there, um, you know, two and a half feet, uh, seven and whatever feet from the property line. And as I said earlier, um, uh, once I had it built, then is when I got a, you know, a letter saying that, um, that it, you know, that, and I spoke to the guy, the, the inspector who, who called me, and I think his name was Wayne, and he told me that, um, that we needed a permit for it, but that it shouldn't be an issue because they have done, they have approved, um, uh, permits with, with less, you know, that I should not have an issue the way it looks right now. And, um, the only issue would probably be was, was, um, you know, the, the, the feet between seven and a half feet and, you know, the two feet that I need. But he said that they've done that in the past and based on where it's at and the way it is, it should not be, you know, uh, uh, something major. So that's how I applied for a variance. And, um, and that's why we are, you know, we're here today. And I just want to comment on just one thing to you. I've been here for 20 years. I'm a first responder. We don't go out to eat anymore, so we do make up food out there so that we don't get sick. And, um, the, the, you know, for 20 years I've been there, you could check the records, not one noise complaint, not one police complaint, not nothing. We, we go by, we, you know, um, 23 years in law enforcement and no phone calls to my house, just for the record.
Okay. One more question. Your neighbor has asked that you might possibly build a fence for his privacy. Are you against that? Or is that something you might consider if we approve this?
I will consider it if, if, you know, I would, I would do anything so I don't have to see him.
Let me reword, let me reword this. If, if, if we approve this.
As far as privacy is concerned, if it's, if it, you know, if I, if they allow me to put a fence in that area there where the grill is, I don't have a problem doing it. And I told him that too. But I also told him that I'm not going to put something up that's going to be illegal.
So back to the original question. If, if part of the agreement, if you got this agreement to let it stay as it is, you would not be against having part of the agreement is to put up a satisfactory fence? Yes, you would do that or no, you would not do that?
I would absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Phyllis?
No, no other questions.
No, I have no more questions.
Okay. And once again, are any members of the public who wish to comment on this application? Come on back up.
Hi, I just want to make it clear. When he said, you know, just mentioned the fence and he said, I, I'll, I'll be okay with doing that, he wanted to put one where we have bushes going along the thing. So if it's on his side of the stone, that's great. But if he plans on coming through and tearing our bushes up or putting something up that we've had there for 37 years or however long it's been, right? Then I'm against that, right? You know, it would have to be something on his side of the stone. That, that's.
When you say his side of the stone, you mean his side of the property or you mean five feet away from his side of the property?
It would, he has a stone wall built up. It would have to be on that side of the stone, not on the other side of the stone because it wouldn't do any good at all on the other side because of how high up the wall is.
All right, unless there's any other comments, move to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. I'm going to recall, um, Charles Vedder, 26 Thomas Avenue. Mr. Vedder? Okay. Billy Van Jura, 35 Hasbrook Drive. Mr. Van Jura? Okay. Can we call that one? Number 12. Joseph and Mary Ann Clark, 2 Jordan Street.
Mr. Clark, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
I would like to put up a pool in my yard. I live on a corner plot, so the variances are different. I always thought I had a backyard, but now I find that I have two front yards. Yes, double lot. I would, I submitted, uh, diagrams and pictures to show there's a large hill in my yard. More than half of my yard is 30 feet tall or more. I would like to also build an eight-foot, uh, deep deck, extended deck that I have to just a part of the pool, planning on leaving at least 15 feet from the fence. That's a pre-existing six-foot fence around the back of the yard.
I'm going to ask you to limit your, um, comments to the application that's in front of us, which is just the pool right now.
Okay. Right, then just the pool. The pool would be 15 feet from the property line on Channingville Road. And on Jordan Street, it would be 94 feet from Jordan Street. The pool's already surrounded by a six-foot fence. And I don't think any of my neighbors have a problem with it. I've talked to all of them and across Channingville Road is all county parkland and trees wouldn't
All right. And when we went out there for the site visit, you indicated that there's a drive well, a dry well in that back, in that yard also?
Yeah, it's just two, more toward the base of the hill is a dry well we put down. I'm not exactly sure where they did.
Okay. And does that prevent you from putting the pool on top of that?
Yeah, I'm afraid of a collapse.
Okay. And tell me this, do you have a septic system?
No, town sewer, town water.
That's all I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Again, star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone.
All right. Hearing nothing, I move to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that motion carries. Next is number 13, Mr. Messer Schmidt, 28 Nassau Road.
How you doing, good evening?
Hi, Mr. Messer Schmidt, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete?
Linda's up there on Zoom. I don't know if she can deactivate it. I think she's down in the far right corner, eight, four, five, 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 nine, three thousand.
Oh, okay. If, uh, if there's, is that the applicant then you're saying?
Yes. Well, I'm with her.
Oh, you are? Okay. Yep, she can unmute herself by hitting star six on her phone. I'm trying to do it from here, but I think you need to do it yourself. Star six from your phone. That's not working.
Would you like to skip me and I can call around the, try to reach her out? I'll stick out. Or you want, or would you like to ask me any questions you'd like?
Who, who do you want to make the presentation?
She was going to make the presentation. I, I can make the presentation if she need to.
Well, I'll move on to the next one if you want to talk to her and see.
Yes.
How you want to proceed.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Okay, sure. Then we'll second call that one. And so next is number 14, Charles and Judith at 5 Main Street.
What number is last?
I don't know.
Oh, just a moment. The person identified as Sant, Santa Drive?
I'll do the table.
Did you want to comment on something? Okay, have a seat. Sorry.
How do you say your last name?
Palercio.
Yeah, like I said.
Yeah. Mrs. Palercio, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
So we have, um, an old house and we have an existing enclosed back. Oh, I'm sorry. We have an old house with an existing enclosed back porch. And we would like to, um, replace that with an updated existing enclosed back porch. The porch is going to come out an, an additional two feet from what it originally is, just to give us some, a little room to walk around inside. It's going to be split between, uh, the porch is going to be split, half of it is going to be, um, a laundry room and the other half is going to be a mudroom.
All right. Any questions? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wants to comment on this?
Star six to unmute if you're on the phone, star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, it's on the bottom of your screen.
All right. Without hearing anything, um, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Okay. Motion carried. Okay, you can either wait or watch our deliberation or find out in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Messer Schmidt, did you decide how you wanted to?
Oh, she said that she was trying to say hello and, um, for some reason didn't pick up, so. Do you want to try it again?
If she can unmute.
If she can unmute, then she just has to hit star six, asterisk six.
Is she on her phone or on a, on a computer?
Uh, on the phone. On the phone, iPhone.
Yeah. Star six would be the trick for unmuting. I'm trying to do it from here for her, but it's not... Unable, I'm unable to do that.
Yeah, you have to hit star six. Okay. If you can't get through, I can just give the presentation. Sorry about that. She says she's hitting star six.
She is?
Connected for some reason.
All right, want to give it a shot?
Sure.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
We want to do a special application for accessory apartment. That's one bedroom on the downstairs ground level of the house.
And you intend to occupy the residence?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello?
You got her, you got her.
Hello?
Oh, yes, hello. Nope, she just muted herself. I didn't do that. How'd you do that? So close. So close.
Hello?
Yes. Hello.
This is Messerschmidt?
Hi, do you swear or affirm that the test... Hello? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you describe your application?
Okay. My name is Alinda Shell Messerschmidt. I am seeking a special use permit for an accessory apartment in the downstairs. This accessory apartment caused no structural changes to the pre-existing structure of the house. Originally, the house had an additional, and all the structural work was done in 2000. Most upgrade permits related to the downstairs was closed out in 2004. Now, we want to legalize downstairs, original 649 square foot of available floor space for rooms, kitchen, other rooms, and fourth bathroom. All rooms have the grass windows. Kitchen has exit to outside. There is a front and a rear exit to the apartment. This upgrade has no variance change other than the accessory apartment. This apartment will help to meet the demands for available rental in Dutchess County. This apartment is upgraded to meet city code. That's all.
Okay. You said there was two entrances to the apartment?
That's already there. One's from the front, we're going to find one's going to the back entrance.
Okay, and the front?
Everything not changed, just upgraded them, like all the... To meet the city code. And also want to legalize it.
All right, so the back entrance is through patio doors in the back, that's correct?
Right, it's not patio door. Back is downstairs kitchen.
Say that again?
Back entrance is from downstairs apartment kitchen.
Right, but it's like a two swinging doors? Two glass doors, like a patio doors?
Yeah, like a... Back rear exit has two double French doors.
Okay.
And front has just a single door going out.
All right, but that, that front entrance is through the main house, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And on the diagram, and quite clearly, there are two bedrooms in the accessory apartment. How do you ma... How do you intend to limit it to one bedroom?
I make one is like an office or playroom.
Okay. And you intend to reside in the, in the home?
Yes, that's my primary residence.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This is my primary residence.
Your primary residence, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions, Christine?
No questions.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I do. Why do you have two ranges in the kitchen? Is this going to be a private apartment? You can use this for commercial use.
Question again, why is the one?
Can you look at it in diagram? There's more range. The... The... When we were printing that out, for whatever reason, it came out to... It does just one stove downstairs, it's a stove top. There... I, I think they, when we were designing it, it was supposed to be like a spacer, and they never took it out to get these wall footage, you know, how many feet there is from there to the window, from the window to the door. But there's one, one...
One stove.
No oven.
It's just a cooktop?
Cooktop, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
When we were out on Sunday, sir, you indicated that you would bomb the house because it had previously been a rental. Is that indeed correct? Did I understand that?
When we, when we were upstairs, when we were upstairs for a short period of time, I had a officer from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department staying there, and then he moved out. And then after that, it was left vacant for the last four years. Three years, maybe?
That's the, that's the apartment that you're seeking to legalize this evening, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm asking about the upstairs.
What about the upstairs? That's the...
That you had said you bombed because people who had been renting there just moved out?
Yes.
Did I misunderstand? Yes?
She wants to know whether you intend to use the building, the home, as a rental building or as your primary residence?
Primary.
Okay, you recognize that it has to be owner-occupied?
Yes.
Okay. Was that your question, Phyllis?
I'm just confused because I thought that he indicated that he had it rented out. So, it was just confusing. But is he saying that it's his primary residence? That's fine.
The, there is no renter in the apartment right now.
No further questions.
That's, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, that was clear from our field visit.
Right. What, what it was is the upstairs, what it was, I switched around. Originally, we were going to rent out the entire house. Okay, the guy moved. The officer was downstairs, he was going to move out. The person that moved in, we were just going to rent the entire house out, not as two apartments, just a single-family house area. And the gentleman downstairs was delayed. He didn't move out in time. So then, we never rented out the apartment to the guy upstairs. We kept it. That's it. That was where we stayed. And then, now we took full control over the house. That's the way it is. So...
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, if I may. How long has that been your primary residence?
2001.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Again, you can star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone, and star nine to raise your hand.
All right, I don't see anyone, so therefore I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Susan Sabo, 96 Culver and Drive. Yeah, they need to unmute, right?
No, I don't think they unmute.
Yeah, we're here.
Hi, Ms. Sabo, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Why don't you say what you'd like to do?
I'd like to have a pool on the place of my yard. I don't have any other place to put it. And I am 96 years old, and I have a very deteriorated condition physically. I try to span, and the pool, they only help for me because I can do physical therapy in the pool. And I hope he'll be like, understand. And the pool will be not near to the road. And even I have big bushes at the side, so it won't be visible. And the Dutchess County and town hall, but it's always very accommodated with me and with senior. So, I hope this won't be an exception. Thank you.
Okay. And you're, as you pointed out, you're on a corner lot, sort of elevated from the road, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a lot of vegetation there along the roadway, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And can you say, can you describe the, the size of the pool?
It's a 12-by-12 heated pool.
Okay.
And then, and then it's got a spillover spa.
Say that again?
It's going to also have attached a spillover spa with jets, with about a dozen jets for the legs and her back.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis? Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Lori has raised her hand. Thank you, Lori, let me...
Hello?
Yep.
Uh, we're... My father and I live next door.
Hang on, just a second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Lori, what's your last name?
Hi, Dad.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Yeah, my father and I live next door to Mrs. Sabo, and we'd really like to see her get the pool. She's an elderly lady, and we would, with an indoor pool, she's much safer getting in and out. And with an above-ground pool, it's very much an accident waiting to happen. So, we're in favor of that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sabo, is there something else you want to say?
No, she's fine. That's it.
Okay. All right, anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Go move.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And that passes. Next is item number 16, Brian Burke, 13 Vanderwater Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Paul Tierms, engineer representing, representing the project and Brian Burke, property owner.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, yes.
All right, why don't you describe what you want to do?
The property is 13 Vanderwater Avenue. You know, about five years ago, there was an existing house, had a fire, and, you know, was ruined, the house was in ruins, had to come down. In 2019, Mr. Burke brought, purchased the vacant piece of property and is looking to build back a single-family house on this lot. We're proposing to build a modest, one-story ranch-style house, 1,540 square feet, or thereabouts. The lot was an existing, non-conforming lot as it... The total width of the lot is 40 feet, and in that zoning, there's 20-foot side yard setbacks. So, there was an existing house there. Looking at all the old records we could find and photos, the house was located close to the northern property line, to the adjacent house, and it looks like there was a little driveway entrance to the south side near the fence that, in the property of New York State, for 4455, Arterial borders the south side. We're also looking for a... So, we're looking for a side yard setback variance. Obviously, 20 and 20 does not allow for a house. We're looking to go to a three-foot setback on the north side and a nine-foot setback on the south side. And the property also has a, includes a front yard zoning setback of 30 feet. We are looking, from the photos we have of the old house, it looked to be in line with the neighboring house on Vanderwater Avenue. So, we're looking to keep just the consistent front line in, in line with the houses. So, instead of 30 feet, we're looking for a 20-foot setback. So, there are the two side yard setbacks we're requesting a variance for, and also the front yard setback. Brian, did I miss anything?
Yeah, what, if I could speak, I, I did, before I purchased the lot, I did go to the zoning department and the town, the building department. Since there was a structure there, there was a house there since 1910. That's when it was originally built. They didn't think I'd have a problem, you know, putting something that obviously met everybody's standards at, on the lot. You know, like I said, I do have a picture of the house that was there. I did pull it out. Like I said, it was built in 1910.
That picture was in our submission package.
Okay, I didn't know if you had it there. All right, thanks. All right, thank you. You have it then. Good job. You know, that, that, we're looking, again, I'm looking to do something that, that is, fits in that area, not overbuild it, and making improvement on a, on a lot now. We're, and I've, I've taken out three, three trucks full of garbage that people think they can just dump. So, I would, you know... That's why I'm, you know, trying to, trying to do something better on that lot.
It is vacant lot. At the end, it is, we call cul-de-sac or dead end. You know, definitely is a place where people feel a convenient place to stop by and dump things. And of course, that takes away from the neighbors and the community, and to bring back a residential house there on, on a pre-approved, you know, lot, I think would be a benefit for, for the town of Poughkeepsie and also the neighborhood.
Tell me, is there town water and sewer there?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Christine?
Is the house about the same square footage as the one that was there before?
Yeah, the one that we're proposing to build is exactly, it's the same, approximately the same square footage.
Yeah, it's pretty...
1550 was the old house. We're going around, very around 1500.
The square footage is this, you know, within a...
Right.
15, within a, less than 100 feet difference. I think we're 10 square feet less.
Thank you.
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
No question.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Sure, come on up, if you guys don't mind. Is there a portable microphone somewhere?
Um, I think we're going to have to ask those two, the two guys to sit down, and, yep.
I don't want you, well, I suppose.
I guess.
I guess.
Good evening.
You state your name?
Joseph Oakley, I live, I own a house next door, 15 Vanderwater Avenue.
Mr. Oakley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Sure, what do you want to say?
Uh, I don't mind him building a house, that's fine, but it's too close to the building that I live at, 15 Vanderwater. The window's going to be close to the new house, you know, the, it's like a privacy, it's going to be a little tight right there.
How long have you lived there?
Four years.
Was the house, the old house was there before, or?
Yes.
And how close was that to your property before?
It was pretty close.
Okay, okay.
No, I bought the property, excuse me, I, it's a rental property now, I rent it.
Right.
Yeah, I rent it, I live next door, agendate to Vanderwater Avenue.
Okay, but the house that was on the lot?
Yes.
How much closer, how much more will the new house encroach compared to the old house?
I'm not sure what his diagram is, what he's building.
Well...
If it's the same, same thing?
We try to keep it in the same line as the previous house.
But I talked to the town in zoning, they told me the new law is they have to have the new laws, the new variance now, with different setbacks. I understand this was back then?
No, no, I'm not asking about what the setbacks, whether it was legal, whether the old house was legal, I just want to know whether the new house is any different than the old house? If you know.
Yeah, I'm not sure, well, he's building the new house, what kind, because one, he's saying it's a one-family, then he's saying it's a modern family house, so it should go straight up, not wide.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Any questions? Christine, Tony?
I have...
All right, Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. So, why don't you, I want to hear from you.
Thank you, I do have one closing comment then. We try to keep this house in line with the, the previous house. And, you know, the comment was made, like, the, there's a driveway cutout on the south side, as you could see on the survey map, was a pre-existing driveway cutout. So we try to maintain that, where the existing house was previous to the fire and the previous driveway was, and that was our thoughts for locating the house where we proposed.
Okay, and am I reading the survey right, that the lot's only 40 feet wide?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, you don't want like a Harry Potter kind of one-inch-square wide house, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're trying to, as we'll be working with Mr. Burke on the design of the new house, we're trying to put some similar architecture and reverse gable and front porch to look like, similar to the house that was pre-existing.
Okay, any other questions?
Questions?
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
Yeah, I...the gentleman that was just speaking, is that the architect of the property?
Yes. Did you have a question? Tony?
Hear me?
No, I can't hear you.
Well then, how can you answer me? Hello? Okay, Lisa heard me. Does, does the, is the proposed new house going to follow, did I understand correctly, the same footprint as the old house?
It is not exactly the same, but it's very similar in size. The square footage is the same. It's a, the existing house was a two-story, that was slightly, couple of feet narrower, and this is a single, proposes a single story, you know, a couple of feet wider.
And the greater width is on the north side of the house, I guess, right?
On both sides?
Both sides.
On both sides?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Tony?
Thank you, no, I think I'm good.
So, do we know what the side yard setbacks were approximately for either side for the original house?
By looking at the information we could find, we try to keep the three, we believe the three-foot setback on the north side is pretty much equal to it was. I think the, their house, the pre-existing house, was a little narrower, as you could, if you got a cop, part of our submitted was the survey with the, that picked up the old driveway cutout there, and you could see that if the house was a little narrower, it would bump into, it does, the driveway comes up to the front of the house. So, we kept the north setback where it was, and we cheated a little bit on the state right-of-way side on the south.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the public who wants to comment on this? Any other questions? All right, then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Did you want to say anything else? No, okay, then I'll move to close the public hearing. You still second it?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay, or we'll let you know, we'll let you find out in the morning. I'm going to recall Billy Van Jura at 35 Hasbrook Drive. All right, and I'm going to recall Charles Vedder at 26 Thomas Avenue.
I don't see anybody trying to get on.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, let me see which numbers they are. Number nine?
Number 11, right?
And make a motion to adjourn that to the October 19th?
Second.
Meeting, and Sonia, if you want to reach out to them, just to make sure they know that they attend. And that was 11 also?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, I move, you seconded both of those?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning items nine and 11 to the October 19th meeting, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Phyllis? Okay, any opposed? Then those, that motion, those motions carry. All right, and I just need a little break before we go into deliberation. So I'd like to adjourn for five minutes, or till, how about till 7:30?
Okay.